Folks, and we really, really appreciate everyone allowing us to do this meeting this way. So without further ado, I think this is our third teleconference meeting, I believe. And our first order of business is to do roll call of the members present. So as I call your name, if you'll stay, if you're present, and we'll go through the list. And I know the vice chair is here as well, so we'll start with the vice chair.
I'm here.
All right, great. Commissioner Haynes.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson. Commissioner Johnson. We'll come back to Commissioner Johnson. Commissioner Moore.
Present.
Council Lady Murphy.
I'm here, but the volume is, or the sound is breaking up. I don't know if I need to do something different.
Okay, we'll have somebody reach out to you, councilwoman, okay? You're welcome. Commissioner Sims.
Present.
Commissioner Tibbs, here. And then let's try Commissioner Johnson. See, she's on the line. You'll have to unmute yourself.
Present.
Oh, excellent. And so I'm here as well, so we have eight commissioners present. I appreciate y'all being on the call today. Thank you so much. Hopefully, we won't go seven hours today, but we do have a pretty robust agenda. And we'll go ahead and get started with that. First is, we always, on these teleconference calls, we have to suspend the rules and make a motion to do that. But first, I'd like to hand it over to Kwan, our attorney, and explain the importance and why we're having these teleconference meetings and the legalities of that. And then we'll entertain a motion. Kwan, are you on the line?
I am. Thank you, Chairman, for recognizing me. As most of you know, Tennessee state law, as well as local law, requires that all meetings of any governmental entity or public body be held in person. However, due to the ongoing pandemic related to the COVID-19 virus, the executive, the governor has issued a number of executive orders that allow for telephonic or electronic meetings to protect the health and well-being of Tennesseans in light of that pandemic. So, but in order to have one of those telephonic or electronic meetings, there has to be a motion that deems that the business that this board is going to take out is essential, and it is necessary to protect the well-being of Tennesseans. So, once that motion is made and properly voted upon, you all can proceed.
All right, and that is pursuant to the governor's executive order number 16. And so what I'll do is, and also, just as a housekeeping note, when I say raise your hand to the commissioners, that's not in-person raise your hand. But on the app, there is a button to raise your hand if you want to be recognized. And also, you can unmute yourself and do that out loud as well. So when I say raise your hands for a motion or a second, if the commissioners would do that on your app, and then I can recognize you to make those motions. So the first motion here is, as Kwan has said, this motion will include that this meeting is electronically necessary. So when you say you make this motion, you're making this motion that this meeting is electronically necessary to protect the health, safety, and welfare of Tennesseans in light of the COVID-19 outbreak. Any planning rules that are in conflict with rules with the governor's order are hereby temporarily suspended until the governor's order is no longer in effect. So commissioners, who would like to make that motion?
So.
And vice chair, Farr. Vice Chair Farr makes the motion, and Council Lady Murphy.
Kinda, and my, the volume and everything's working fine now. So, thank you, ITF, or however it was fixed.
Perfect. And would you like to second this motion?
I'm sorry, I seconded it.
Oh, perfect. I didn't hear that. Thank you very much. And we'll also, I'll try to go slow, make sure we don't miss anything. And then if y'all let me know if I miss anything, I want to make sure we cover everything correctly. So it's a proper motion and a proper second to hold the meeting. And I'll do roll call votes, and if y'all will just say your vote when I call your name. Vice Chair Farr.
Yes, so moved.
Commissioner Haynes.
Approved.
Commissioner Johnson. Commissioner Johnson. We'll come back to Commissioner Johnson. You're still on mute. There we go. Commissioner Johnson.
Yay.
Commissioner Moore.
Aye.
Council Lady Murphy.
Aye.
Commissioner Sims.
Aye.
Commissioner Tibbs.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, eight ayes, none against, and that motion is approved to hold the telephonic meeting as permitted under the executive order number 16. Our next order of business is the adoption of the agenda, item C. The agenda was sent out earlier, and it is before you, so we'll need a motion to approve. If you'll raise your hand, commissioners in the app. Vice Chair, you want to make the motion to approve?
Sure, I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes from the...
No, the agenda, the adoption.
For the, right, sorry.
Yes, and Council Lady Johnson, would you like to second that?
Yes, I second.
Perfect. Any other questions? You'll raise your hand or say vocally. Seeing no other questions, we are now on the vote for approving the adoption of the agenda. And I'm going to go through the list again. Vice Chair Farr.
Aye.
Commissioner Haynes.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Moore.
Aye.
Council Lady Murphy.
Aye.
Commissioner Sims.
Aye.
Commissioner Tibbs.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, eight ayes, none against. The adoption of the agenda is approved. Now we're on to item D, which is the approval of the April 23, 2020 minutes. There was a correction. I just want to make sure that you all are aware of the correction. In the original minutes, Commissioner Johnson requested to, on the last line on page 49, to change from the original, said Ms. Johnson spoke in opposition as she is not sure how this development will promote health and welfare. And the motion to change that is to quote Ms. Johnson spoke in opposition as she is not sure how this development will promote health, safety, and welfare, especially the lack of grading and development plan on critical lots, end quote. That's the one change that we got prior to discussing it now. And so we will need a motion to adopt the minutes. But is there any, do I have that correct, Commissioner Johnson? I want to make sure that you're okay with that.
Yes, Chair, it was correct.
Okay, any other questions or additions or edits? Raise your hand or please vocally say. And seeing none, we'll entertain a motion to adopt the minutes as amended. Is there a motion to raise your hand? And Commissioner Tibbs.
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner. Appreciate that. And is there a second? Commissioner Haynes? All right, second, that's a proper motion. And second, any other discussion? You'll raise your hands, make sure we get everybody. Seeing no other discussion, all those in favor, say aye when I call your name or pose vote no. Commissioner Farr.
Aye.
Commissioner Haynes.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Moore.
Aye.
Council Lady Murphy.
Aye.
Commissioner Sims.
Aye.
Commissioner Tibbs.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, eight ayes, none against, and the minutes are approved. Now we are on to the recognition of council members. This is a little bit more tricky, but I believe that we do have a couple of council members on the line. And just like we do at the meeting, we take everyone as we see them come on to the line. And the first was Council Member Robert Nash.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and the commission members. This is Robert Nash, a council member for District 27. Just want to say that we are in favor of item 14 on your agenda today, the South Plaza Shopping Center revision and final approval of the Chase Bank Building. Should be a nice addition to the neighborhood, and certainly, that's a very commercial area, and they should fit right in. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you for joining us on the call today, councilmember. Always good to have council members on the line. The next was Council Lady Sharon Hurt. Are you on the line? Council Lady Hurt? Let me see if she's... I see Council Lady Hurt is on the line, but can you hear us, Council Lady? We'll come back to Council Lady Hurt. Next, we saw Council Lady Jojoy Stiles. Council Lady? Council Lady? We're having some technical difficulties a little bit, I think. Director, are you still online?
May I suggest that we go back to Council Lady Hurt, who I believe had connected? And we can, Council Lady, we can unmute you from here. Let's try that one more time, but I saw you beginning to come through. Can you unmute? Let's give that a try.
Okay, let's do that. Council Lady Hurt.
Council Lady Hurt, we're not able to hear you for the record. Could you try getting closer to the device, please? Okay, Chairman, I'm going to recommend that we mute Council Lady Hurt. I'm going to reach out to the council office and see if they can reach out to her separately. Let's go back to your plan of, do we have Councilwoman Stiles? Okay, and we don't have Councilwoman Stiles anymore? I do see Councilwoman Parker in front of us here.
Councilman Parker.
Hey, good afternoon, commissioners. So I'm here to speak in support of item 36, and it is my intention to stick around until that item comes up. So hopefully, I don't run into any issues with being able to stick around that long. But thank y'all for being here this afternoon.
Thank you, councilman. We appreciate that, and we'll make sure that you're called upon during that time. And Director, any update on Council Lady Stiles or Council Lady Hurt?
We believe that Council Lady Stiles had a conversation with a staff member and has hung up. And so we're reaching out to Councilwoman Hurt separately. And so I do see Councilwoman Hauser here, I believe, still in the queue. We're going to try to reach out to her now.
Okay. Is she on the...
Hello, this is, hello, this is Council Lady Hauser. And I appreciate y'all seeing to sit in today. I think my event, number 20, has been deferred till May 28. But I wanted to let folks in District 22 know that we are working on scheduling a community meeting, hopefully in person, if not by webex, on the 735, 7335 Charlotte Avenue project. So I know some of my people were planning on listening in today, and I wanted to let them know that it has been deferred, but we will be having a public meeting.
Perfect, thank you. Appreciate it. And Director, about Council Lady, we want to make sure we get all the council members.
We are trying to reach out to her separately, but perhaps it would be prudent, one more time, to try to see if she's logged in. We can unmute, and if not...
Whenever we get a...
If you're willing to entertain a statement that she wants to make later on in the agenda, we could propose that. Would that work for you?
Yes, without objection. Is there any objection to that, commissioners? I don't, if you'll raise your hand, I don't see any objection, because we want to make sure that we take care of the council members. Let's try Council Lady Stiles again. Can you hear us? Or are you on the line? And then if not, we'll come back to you later in the meeting when you're able. And then, Council Lady Hurt, are you on the line? Let's try Council Lady Hurt one more time.
I am. Wait a minute, hold up. Yes, I am.
We can hear you now, Council Lady. You're right.
Yes, I'm just, I'm just listening. I didn't, I didn't have anything specific. I just wanted to participate and listen.
Oh, perfect. Thank you, Council Lady. Welcome.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so I don't, Director, do you see any other council members at this point?
I do not.
All right, then that concludes item E, and we'll come back. Whenever Council Lady Stiles is ready, we'll recognize her. We are now on to item F, which is items for deferral or withdraw. And I believe that Lisa is on the line to do that.
Hi, Chairman.
Hello.
We have the following items for deferral or withdrawal. Item number 1A, 2020 CP 014001. And staff recommendation is to defer that indefinitely. Item number 1B, which is the associated case, 2020 Z 050 PR 001. Staff recommendation is to defer indefinitely. Item number 2 on page 6 of your agenda, 2015 SP 062001. Staff recommendation is to defer to the May 28 meeting. Item number 3, 2020 SP 012001. Staff recommendation is to defer to the May 28 meeting. Item number 4, 2018 S 209001. Staff recommendation is to defer to the May 28 meeting. Item number 5, 2019 S 086001. Staff recommendation is to defer to the May 28 meeting. Item number 6, 2020 S 041001. Staff recommendation is to defer to the May 28 meeting. Item number 7 on page 7 of your agenda, 2020 S 066001. Staff recommendation is to defer to the May 28 meeting. Item number 8, 2019 HP 001001. Staff recommendation is to defer to the May 28 meeting. Item number 9, 2020 Z 007 PR 001. Staff recommendation is to defer to the May 28 meeting. Item number 10A, 2020 Z 008 PR 001. Staff recommendation is to defer to the May 28 meeting. The associated case, item 10B, 6177 P 004. Staff recommendation is to defer to the May 28 Planning Commission meeting. On page 8 of your agenda, item 11A, 2020 Z 009 PR 001. Staff recommendation is to defer to the May 28 meeting. The associated case, 11B, 88P 029001. Staff recommendation is to defer to the May 28 meeting. Item number 12, 2020 Z 027 PR 001. Staff recommendation is to defer to the May 28 meeting. Item number 13, 2020 Z 029 PR 001. Staff recommendation is to defer indefinitely. Item 14, 2020 Z 043 PR 001. Staff recommendation is to defer indefinitely. Item number 15 on page 9 of your agenda, 2020 Z 058 PR 001. Staff recommendation is to withdraw. Item number 16, 2020 Z 062 PR 001. Staff recommendation is to defer to the May 28 Planning Commission meeting. Item number 17, 2019 Z 015 TX 001. Staff recommendation is to defer to the May 28 Planning Commission meeting. Item number 18, 2001 UD 002011. Staff recommendation is to defer to the May 28 meeting. Item number 19A, 2020 SP 019001. Staff recommendation is to defer to the May 28 meeting. The associated case on page 10, item 19B, 8487 P 007. Staff recommendation is to defer to the May 28 meeting. Item number, item number 20, 2020 SP 023001. Staff recommendation is to defer to the May 28 Planning Commission meeting. Item number 27, 2020 Z 067 PR 001. Staff recommendation is to defer to the May 28 Planning Commission meeting. Item number 30, 2020 S 064001. Staff recommendation is to defer indefinitely. Item 31, 2020 Z 009 TX 001. Staff recommendation is to defer to the May 28 Planning Commission meeting. And item number 35, 2020 Z 028 PR 001. Staff recommendation is to defer to the May 28 Planning Commission meeting.
Thank you, Lisa. So items for deferral, Lisa, I'm going to go through the list, and if you'll say yes or no, if it's correct at the end, I appreciate it. We'll go slow since there are a lot of items. And commissioners, make sure I'm correct as well. We've got items 1A, 1B, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10A, 10B, 11A, 11B, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19A, 19B, 20, 27, 30, 31, and 35. Is that correct, Lisa?
Yes, that's correct. Thank you.
All right, commissioners, you've heard the items for deferral or withdrawal. Is there any questions? If you'll raise your hand. We've got Commissioner Johnson. You recognized?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Item number 30, 2020 S dash 064001. Our staff recommendation is defer indefinitely. I would like to make sure with our legal representative's opinion, it does not trigger TCA 13 dash 4 dash 304A, and 60 days are closed. And so it is deferred by, the timetable was waived by applicant.
Kwan?
Right, right. This was Kwan for from the legal. Yes, that is correct, that it will not be administratively, excuse me, not administratively approved. It will not be approved as a matter of law because of the indefinite deferral.
Thank you so much for the confirmation.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other questions? We'll make sure. So now we'll entertain a motion. Seeing no other questions, let's entertain a motion. And Vice Chair, you want to make the motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion that we adopt the consent agenda. I'm sorry, items for deferral and withdrawal.
Thank you, Vice Chair. And is there a second? We need somebody to raise their, Commissioner, raise their hand. Commissioner Tibbs?
Second.
Proper motion. Any other discussion? Raise your hand or vocally say want to discuss. Seeing no other? Vote aye. Want to call your name or nay? And we'll start with Vice Chair Farr.
Aye.
Commissioner Haynes.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson. Commissioner Moore.
Aye.
Council Lady Murphy.
Aye.
Commissioner Sims.
Aye.
Commissioner Tibbs.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, eight ayes, none against. And those items are approved for deferral or withdrawal. Lisa, we are on the consent agenda now. Item G, Lisa?
Hi. As noted to the public, items on the consent agenda will be voted on at a single time. No individual public hearings will be held, nor will the commission debate these items unless a member of the audience or the commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda. And as information, if you are not satisfied with the decision made by the planning commission today, you may appeal the decision by petitioning for a writ of cert with the Davidson County Chancery or Circuit Court. Your appeal must be filed within 60 days of the date of the entry of the planning commission's decision. To ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements have been met, please be advised that you should contact independent legal counsel. The following items are on the consent agenda. Item number 21, 2020 HL 006001, 1600 10th Avenue North. It's a request to apply a historic landmark district on property located on 10th Avenue North. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item number 22, 2020 Z 047 PR 001. It's a request to rezone from CS to MULA for property located at 204 Woodruff Street. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item number 23, 2020 Z 051 PR 001. The request to rezone from RS5 to R6A for property located on Lucille Street. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. On page 11 of your agenda, item number 24, 2020 Z 063 PR 001. It's a request to rezone from RS5 to RM28NS, zoning for properties located on Witset Road. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item number 25, 2020 Z 065 PR 001. It's a request to rezone from IR to MUNNS for properties located on 6th Avenue North. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item number 26, 2020 Z 066 PR 001. It's a request to rezone from IR to MUNNS for properties located on 6th Avenue North. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item number 28, 12283P 003, the Woodlands Phase 3 revision and final. It's a request to revise the preliminary plan for a portion of a planned unit development overlay district and for final site plan approval for property located on Pineview Lane. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. Item number 29 on page 12 of your agenda, 24784P 003, South Plaza Shopping Center revision and final. It's a request to revise a portion of a PUD and for final site plan for property located on Nolan's Hill Pike to permit a financial institution. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. And under other business, item number 37, to approve William Hastings as Downtown Code Design Review Committee Representative for the Planning Commission. Item 38, approve James Moore as Downtown Code Design Review Committee Representative for Vice Mayor Jim Schulman. And item number 42, to accept the director's report.
Thank you, Lisa. So if you'll, I'll go through these, and if you'll say if it's correct at the end, and make sure we get these correct. The items on the consent agendas are items 21, 22, 23, 24, 25, 26, 28, 29, 37, 38, and 42. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you, Lisa. Commissioners, you've heard those items for the consent agenda, and so we will need a motion to adopt those items on the consent agenda. And so we will need a motion to adopt those items on the consent agenda. And Commissioner Farr?
I make a motion that we adopt the consent agenda.
It's a proper motion. Is there a second? One of the commissioners would raise your hands. Commissioner Tibbs... Oh, Commissioner Moore?
A second.
Thank you, Commissioner. That's a proper second. Any discussion? Raise your hand or vocally say you want to discuss. Seeing no other discussion? Discussion, we are now voting on the consent agenda and I'll do roll call. Vice Chair Farr?
Aye.
Commissioner Haynes?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Moore?
Aye.
Commissioner Murphy?
Aye.
Councilman Murphy, sorry. Commissioner Sims?
Aye.
Commissioner Tibbs?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Those items are adopted. And so, Director, would you tell us which items we are hearing now? Just so we all are on the same page and...
Sure. So, we're going to hear items 32A and B, 33, 34, and 36.
Thank you. And so we have four items to hear. And so now we are going to... I'm going to explain a little housekeeping on these items since it's a little bit different on how we do it, how we're doing it. We're doing it basically the same as last time. But for the listeners at home, we have provided multiple ways to participate in this telephonic meeting. Normally, we take the applicant first and then the supporters and then the opponents. But because of the different ways people... That we have provided people to participate, which I'm proud of the staff to do, just transparent as we can get the meeting, we'll be taking supporters and opponents together, which means when you're talking, when you introduce yourself, you'll need to state your name, your address, and whether you're in support or opposition, and we can help you with that. As usual, we took emailed comments through Tuesday at 3:00 PM. At the start of each public hearing that we hear tonight or this afternoon, Lisa will give a summary of how many emails, comments we've received on those particular items. In addition, we took voice recordings through Tuesday at 3:00 PM. Normally, we would also play those during the meeting, but Director, we did not receive any voicemails for the hearings tonight, did we?
That is correct. The option was available to folks, but we did not receive voicemail.
Okay, perfect. Also, we have a call-in number for members of the public who wish to call in and testify. Please wait until the public hearing for your item to call in. And it will be placed in a queue, so we don't want people testifying on different cases. So for each items, we'll let you know when to call in. And I'll ask Lisa for account on the emailed item comments for each item and give you time to call in and talk to the operators. So, I believe that we are ready for our first item. Also note that all of the presenting staff is working remotely, so we're... We have to operate this. Lisa's going to be operating those particular slideshows. Slides, if they're once on the app. And are there any questions from commissioners before we begin? I want to make sure. If you raise your hand or... Nope. So, we are now ready to begin. And so we are on item 32A. And then we'll hear 32B and we'll take separate votes, although the hearing will provide for both of those items.
Hello, Chairman. Anita McKegg here.
Hi, Anita.
Hello. This is item 32A, a plan amendment request for the Southeast Community Plan. Next slide. The study area shown with the red outline located along Nolan'sville Pike between Pettis Road and Burkett Road. This is south of Lennox Village and at the edge of Davidson County. And yellow is the Williamson County line that runs along Nolan'sville Pike. Next slide. The study area consists of four properties. Within the study area, in a blue outline, are the two properties that comprise the applicant's request. The northernmost property in the study area contains a recently built assisted living facility. Staff recommends approval of the policy amendment. Next slide. The study area is suburban residential corridor policy, surrounded by several other suburban policies. The applicant asked that the policy be changed to suburban neighborhood center. As I mentioned, across Nolan'sville Pike is Williamson County. And I'll talk more about the surrounding policies in a moment. Next slide. The southeast area has numerous waterways in blue and steep slopes shown in yellow and red. However, these sensitive environmental features are not present within the study area. Next slide. Planners hosted a community meeting on March 11th. Approximately 20 people attended. Community leaders discussed their concerns and asked that the applicant team continue discussions with them to see if concerns could be resolved. Next slide. Here's the Nashville Next Growth and Preservation Consent Map. Along Nolan'sville Pike are various centers which are surrounded by transition and infill areas along with neighborhoods. The green network is interwoven. Next slide. Looking at the transportation network, the area has street connectivity. Nolan'sville Pike, shown with the dark red line, is envisioned to be a five-lane arterial boulevard. Burkett Road and Concord Road are also arterials. Pettis Road, shown with a purple line, is a collector arterial. Next slide. The study area is suburban residential corridor policy. To the north are suburban neighborhood center and suburban community center. To the south is suburban community center. To the east is a large area of suburban neighborhood of Aubing. Across Nolan'sville Pike in Williamson County are a few commercial and service uses, surrounded by a large area of residential. Conservation features of waterways and steep slopes are found throughout. Next slide. Zoning shows the study area surrounded by various specific plan zonings. The residential SP within the study area was approved in 2017. Next slide. There is a mixture of existing land uses. Residential uses in yellow and orange, commercial in red, office in pink, institutional in bright green, and vacant properties in pale green. The graphic also shows nearby subdivisions in various stages of development. Next slide. Here's an aerial of the study area. Each of the four properties is outlined in blue. You can see the existing assisted living facility and adjacent subdivision under construction. Next slide. To summarize, extending the adjacent neighborhood center policy is appropriate in this location. The study area is located along a major corridor. Neighborhood center policy's intent is providing services to meet daily needs. Adjacent developments will benefit from increased services. The area has a connected street network. Development will build sidewalks and improve multimodal connectivity. Next slide. Staff recommends approval. Now Jason will present the rezoning case.
Jason?
Commercial limited alternative and mixed-use limited alternative to an area currently zoned for agricultural and residential. Approximately five and a half acres along Nolan'sville Pike is proposed for commercial limited alternative and approximately three acres at the back of the site is proposed for mixed-use limited alternative. Next slide. This is another view of the site. Each lot in the proposal contains a single-family home. Next. Staff is recommending approval if the associated policy amendment is approved and disapproval if the policy amendment is disapproved. Next. The existing zoning districts primarily permit low-density residential as well as agricultural uses. Next slide. The proposed zoning districts both permit non-residential uses. The proposed mixed-use district also permits residential. Next. As Anita explained, the existing policy only supports residential and the proposed policy supports residential as well as non-residential. Both proposed districts permit non-residential uses and therefore are not consistent with the current policy. Proposed zoning districts are consistent with the proposed policy. Next. Since the proposed zoning districts are consistent with the proposed policy, staff has recommended approval if the policy amendment is approved. If the policy amendment is not approved, then staff recommends disapproval if the current policy does not support non-residential uses.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate that. We are now ready to open this item for the public hearing. And is the applicant on the line? And if so, you'll have to raise your hand so we can unmute you. You'll have 10 minutes. Sean will be keeping track of time and will give you a two-minute warning verbally. And if you would like to reserve some of... You can reserve two minutes of the 10 for rebuttal. And is the applicant ready to go?
Chairman, we do have representatives for the applicant on the line so they can begin speaking and I'll start the timer when they start.
Perfect. Please state your name and you have 10 minutes, like I said, and you're recognized.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Well, thank you for all your service to the community on the Planning Commission and making it possible to hear our case today. And keep the movie... Let's keep the city moving forward. We appreciate that. I'm Philip Neal. I'm with Kimley Horn. I live in downtown Nashville now, but I grew up about a mile from the site. And I am the civil engineer for the project assisting the owners of the two parcels with this request, the rezoning and the policy amendment. First, I'll give a brief overview of the request and intent. And in a few moments, I'll pass it off to my co-applicant, Craig Cole, who's also assisting and he can add some more light to the process that we've gone through and then community involvement we've had today. We would like to also go ahead and reserve the last two minutes for rebuttal if necessary. So, of course, any policy change or zone change requests that someone submits should really consider closely the context of the area. And in this case, a few major aspects of the context should really be focused on. First of all, I think Anita and Jason did a great job explaining that the street frontage for the site is mainly Nolan'sville Pike, which is a TDOT State Route 11, serves as a major arterial for Davidson County and Williamson County here at the county line. And we all know this corridor continues to develop and we've all been anxiously awaiting the planned widening project, which is currently in right-of-way acquisition phase for this portion of road. The planned section of widening in this area is five lanes and varies a little bit, but it's quite wide, substantial. And then the secondary frontage for this property is Old Burkett Road. So, all in all, there's about 800 feet of public right-of-way frontage on these two parcels. Secondly, the existing policy immediately to the north, which Anita showed in some of those exhibits, is T3 NC, which includes a commercial shopping center that's currently under construction. And further to the north is the T3 CC with other existing shopping centers visible in that aerial there. The existing policy to the south, immediately to the south, is T3 CC just across Old Burkett Road there, which is intended for larger and more intense commercial use. This proposed site is uniquely situated at the intersection of Nolan'sville Pike and Old Burkett, such that it establishes a more transitional policy classification or establishing such a classification will further solidify this as the southeastern gateway to Davidson County. So we certainly respect that. And Nolan'sville Pike is continuing to develop into a major corridor and providing a policy to allow development to appropriately transition is really sustaining that future growth. We were originally targeting a more intense policy of the CC and a more encompassing zoning of CS, actually. But we've worked closely with the planning staff up to this point to find a more appropriate selection of that NC policy and a split zoning of the CL and MUL, both the alternate zonings, in fact, to further transition and soften that from Nolan'sville Pike to the back residential SP and surrounding context. So, we feel like this request is reasonable and we feel like it's, you know, we've put together a responsible development here. And with that, I'll pass it along to Craig Cole to introduce himself and talk a little bit more about the community involvement.
Well, good evening, Chair and Commissioners. Are you able to hear me tonight?
Yes, we can hear you.
Excellent. Well, thank you so much for the time to present our project and our proposed development here. GBT Realty is a middle Tennessee-based development firm just here in south Nashville, and we have been for more than 30 years. While GBT develops properties nationwide, some of our better-known projects in the area include the Publix-anchored Concord Village, which actually shows on your screen there at the northwest corner of Concord and Nolan'sville Road. We're also under construction with a project almost directly north of this at the southeast quadrant of Pettis Road and Nolan'sville Pike, which is an Aldi-anchored shopping center. GBT, I'll go ahead and say that GBT is also pretty well-known for our iconic 1221 building under construction at the southeastern quadrant of Broadway and I-40 in downtown Nashville, but that's an entirely different division at GBT Realty. While under construction with the Aldi development near this subject property, we were pleased to have significant amount of additional interest from retail users who wanted to join Aldi in serving the residents of southeast Davidson County. Accordingly, we assembled the subject properties for the proposed development of support retail uses. This project enjoys support from the immediately adjacent neighbors. Specifically, the property to our south is owned by a church who has their own plans to develop a church campus. The property to our east is owned by a residential developer who's provided their support of our project and is interested in working with us on the residential portion of this project. Representatives of Tradition Senior Living Facility to the north also attended our community meeting on March 11th, indicating their support for the project. As a part of tonight's application, GBT initiated early meetings with Twana Chick of Cambridge Community Club and with John Stern of Cambridge Community Trust. Following that initial meeting, we coordinated with planning staff to host a community meeting on March 11th at the Cambridge Community Center. That meeting was well-attended. And as I mentioned, the immediately adjacent neighbors expressed their support for the project. We committed to follow-up with meetings with the Cambridge Community Club and tried to do so for the last seven mon... Or excuse me, seven weeks, 49 days. GBT has continued to reach out to the Cambridge representatives. And that included a deferral from the April 23rd Planning Commission meeting. I'll skip over a whole lot of this, but there's a specific sentence I want to get in. Applicant has had productive meetings and conversations with representatives of the Cambridge Community Club, Cambridge Community Trust, and with the project's immediately adjacent neighbors. The Cambridge Community Club has asked us to consider including certain features and land use restrictions within our development. While planning staff has not included these requested features and land use restrictions as a contingency to the request in front of you today, applicant is making a public commitment today that as we move forward with the zoning process, we will continue to work with the community to incorporate as many of those requests as possible. As mentioned, we're a local developer who's vested heavily in the location and this development in our backyard. Some specific commitments we're making associated with this development include that we will not allow any adult-themed businesses, check-caching facilities, drug treatment facilities, self-service storage, or automobile sales. Will require that individual lots will include development. Within the development will include easy-access parking spaces in addition to the accessible stalls that are required, and bike parking is going to be provided. We're also going to require that landscape plans should not include invasive species. In recognition of the Cambridge Community Trust resource document, we reached out to the community very early in the development process and we've continued to do so throughout. Lastly, as discussed with community leader Twana Chick, should the board recommend approval of our zoning request this evening, applicant has agreed to host another community meeting, which may be a virtual meeting, depending upon conditions, prior to the second hearing at City Council, which we expect would be scheduled for July 7th. We appreciate the opportunity to present our project this evening and would like to respectfully request its approval.
Thank you. Sean, do they have two minutes left?
Chairman, they do have two minutes and 18 seconds left, so we'll reserve two minutes for rebuttal.
Perfect. We are now ready to take calls from... Well, let's make sure is the develop... The applicant is that... Are you all finished? I want to make sure I interrupt.
Yes.
Okay, perfect. So, now we are ready to take calls from members of the public who wish to call in. Your screen should show the call-in number. As a reminder, please only call on the current case. When you begin your testimony, please state your name, address, and whether you support or oppose the project. We're not able to display a timer visually, but Sean... Our team member Sean will keep track of time. She will give you a 30-second warning when your... our team member Sean will keep track of time. She will give you a 30-second warning when your time is nearly up. She'll also let you know when your time is up so that we can disconnect and move on to the next caller. So, we first took emails, and so Lisa, did we receive any emails on this particular item?
Hi Chairman, we received two emails, both in support and no emails in opposition.
Thank you, Lisa. And I want to thank everyone who emailed in. Sean, do we have any callers on the line for this particular item?
Chairman, we do have callers on the line. We're in the process of getting them added to the meeting. I'll let you know as soon as the first one is coming in.
Thank you.
Chairman, you have the first caller. I would note that this caller has stated they're representing a community organization and would be requesting five minutes. So, once you confirm that with them, I will run the timer for five minutes as directed.
Okay. Hello caller.
Hi, this is Twana Chick.
Hi, Twana. You're recognized for five minutes.
Thank you. Thank you, Planning Commission. I'm Twana Chick from 604 Bury Cambridge Road, the Cambridge Community Club, speaking on behalf of concerns and opinions the residents have expressed regarding this development. I'm not speaking in support nor opposition, but rather offering a synopsis of our relationship with this developer thus far. We had a very informative meeting with the developer just before COVID put the world on pause. During that meeting and through emails and phone conversations, we have shared with the developer the Cambridge Community Resource Declaration. We've also shared with them our concerns about businesses that are deemed undesirable for our community as well as hopes for businesses that can be brought to our community. We've discussed with them some nearby historical places, the presence of Mill Creek just across Nolansville Road, our concerns about cut-through traffic, our desire to have true green spaces and to include character that fits in with our Cambridge community. Frank discussions have occurred about what commitments can and cannot be made. One important commitment that the developer has been willing to make and which is of great importance to the community is to have another community meeting before this moves to first reading at the council and again before the public hearing at the council. The developer has affirmed to us that this will happen. We are going to be challenged as to how to make this happen in the post-COVID world. These may not be traditional community meetings. We are in communication with our councilman about this. We will be seeking to get commitments in writing where appropriate. The developer has also given us their commitment to abide by the Cambridge Community Resource Declaration to the extent possible, including not using invasive plants, leaving large trees and buffers where possible, and otherwise satisfying the goals of this document. Additional items that community members have requested with regard to this development is to make sure design does not allow easy cut-through to avoid the traffic light at Pettis and Nolansville. This is a very important issue to us for our safety and for that of the as-yet unoccupied residential homes being built there. They have affirmed support for this. We have also requested a dearth of oversized parking spots to be mindful of the surrounding aging population and they have agreed. Additionally, they have given approval to include a pickup area for share riders, benches and tables for those who are waiting for customers, and other ideas submitted as feedback from the community. In conclusion, thus far, we have had good communication with the developers. We demand and expect that they will continue to involve us in community meetings moving forward. We look forward to continued engagement with them in a manner that leads to a success for the community members and developers, and we look forward to their continued contributions to the community they have chosen. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller.
Hi caller, this is Anna with Metro Planning. Yeah, would you be right out past put you in the meeting? Could you mute your TV or streaming device?
Chairman, we're just reminding callers to mute their live stream before we put them in.
Oh, very smart. Thank you.
And Chairman, you do have the next caller now.
All right. Hello, welcome to the Planning Commission meeting. Two minutes, and if you'll state your name and address and whether you oppose or for the project.
So, my name is Cliff Taylor. I'm representing the church that is planned for the address right next to this rezoning at 7224 Old Burkett, Antioch, Tennessee 37013. And given the conversations that we've had with the applicant and and the work that we've done with them over the past several months dating back to the fall of last year, we've had good conversations with them. We respect the way that they've handled themselves and in working with us on different matters. And given what we know about this project at this point, we are in approval for the rezoning of this land.
Thank you for calling in. We appreciate it. Next caller.
Thank you.
Sean, do we have any other callers on this item?
Chairman, we do have, I have an additional caller. We have a technical connection problem. Hold on just a moment.
Okay, no problem.
Okay, great. I'm about to place you in the meeting. If you would mute any voices, you might have to.
Chairman, they're in the meeting now.
Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening, Planning Commission. My name is Ray Judson, and I'm at 7224 Old Burkett Road in Antioch, also representing the churches just south of the proposed changes here. I've been participating with the GBT team and have participated in the community outreach meetings that were previously referenced. I've been very impressed with GBT's willingness to partner with the community and all the stakeholders involved and their willingness to not only consider with an open mind kind of the planning document that has been published by the Cambridge community, but also engage in constructive dialogue where there's things that maybe are controversial or maybe a little bit outside the bounds of what some of us might consider reasonable. And I am in full support of their rezoning request.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you calling in. Sean, any other callers?
Chairman, we have no other callers on the line for this item.
All right, seeing no other callers, the applicant will have two minutes and then we'll see, and then the council member if they're on the line. Applicant, you're recognized.
Of our project. I think it's important to make sure that the commitments from the developer are very clear. And I want to make, whereas I had agreed already to have one more community meeting, I think Twana had stated two, and you know, I can go ahead and do that. I think we can make that work. And Twana and the community have proven to be willing to work with us, and so of course, we will continue to work with them. Other smaller items included early conversations about connectivity. Connectivity will be very important for this property and will need to balance the needs of Metro Planning Commission, excuse me, Metro Public Works along with those of the community, where we don't want to have cut-through traffic, but we do want to have connectivity. So, it's sort of a counterintuitive scenario there where there's really access to Old Burkett, also to Nolansville, and then also to the to-be-extended roadway that'll bisect this project to the residential back in the back. That roadway should provide additional relief for residents in that community or for residents who use Pettis and Nolansville Pike intersection. So, with that, I think that's just a great opportunity for us to continue to work with Twana and the community towards finding ways to meet those goals. Likewise, the Community Resource Document will be addressed as possible. Some of those requirements, for example, including saving each living and dead-growth tree won't be able to be met, but those resources that we can reasonably protect, of course, we're going to.
Applicant, you have 30 seconds.
I think that wraps it up, but I think that in summary, we've enjoyed having the opportunity to work with Twana and the Cambridge Community Club and look forward to continuing to do so as we move through the zoning process.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. And is the council member on the line? Councilman Rutherford, do we, Director, do we see the council member? I didn't see. I don't see.
Do not see the councilman here.
All right. Seeing no one else wishing to speak, I declare the public hearing closed. And now we are on discussion. How about we start with Vice Chair Farr?
Thank you. I actually don't really have too many comments. It seems like this project is consistent with the, well, it will be consistent with a revised plan, assuming we approve the plan, but it seems like it's the appropriate use for this space. And I appreciate, you know, the developer seems to be very open to working with the community, seems connected into the community, and feel like is addressing what concerns have been raised. So, I am supportive of both the plan change, or community plan change, and then the associated case.
Thank you, Vice Chair. How about Commissioner Haynes?
Good job presenting the plan. This developer does enjoy a very good reputation, national style, so I will support the project.
Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you, Chair. Like our previous two commissioners, I am impressed with working relationship with the community and development. As I learned to know, the Cambridge community is one of the very active community. And for that community to not oppose, rather support, and continuous working is very, very impressive. And I think the community plan amendment in that location makes sense. And the zone change makes sense in the specific location, so both I'm in support.
Good, thank you. Commissioner Moore.
I agree with what's been stated. It's definitely refreshing to see the engagement between the community and the developer, and I'm in support of both items.
Councilwoman Murphy.
I have no comments at this time.
Commissioner Sims.
Like all of my fellow commissioners, I'm really impressed with this. I also really love it when people can compromise. That's the heartbeat of our democracy. I love the split zoning. And I really appreciate the continued leadership that Twana and her group really offer us as a city, so I'm good.
Commissioner Tibbs.
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
That's a proper motion. And is there a second? Vice Chair, you want a second?
Second.
That's proper second. Any other discussion? Now, the motion is to approve 32A first. Is that correct, Commissioner Tibbs?
Yes, Chairman.
Thank you, sir. And any other discussion? Seeing none. I'm going to do roll call. Commissioner, Vice Chair Farr.
I, I on 32A.
Yep, this is just 32A. Good job. Commissioner Haynes. Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Moore.
Aye.
Commissioner Murphy.
Aye.
I meant Council lady. I'm sorry, Council lady. Commissioner Sims.
Aye.
Commissioner Tibbs.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Eight ayes, none against, and 32A is approved. Now, we need a motion on 32B. Commissioner Tibbs.
I make a motion to approve 32B as well.
I'll second that, Chairman.
Thank you, Vice Chair, and that's a proper motion. Second, any other discussion? Please raise your hand or vocally say you want to discuss. Seeing no other discussion. I'm going to do roll call vote. Commissioner, Vice Chair Farr.
Aye.
Commissioner Haynes. Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Moore.
Aye.
Councilwoman Murphy.
Aye.
Commissioner Sims.
Aye.
Commissioner Tibbs.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Eight ayes, none against, and 32B is approved. Thank you, everyone, for working on that case. Big case. Now, we're on to item 33. Is that Eric?
Yes, I'm here. Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Eric Hammer. The next item on the agenda is item 33. Requested modification to the standards of 31st Avenue, Long Boulevard, Urban Design Overlay. Thank you, Lisa. The request is for a modification to the side yard build to, or setback standard of the UDO. Next. Planning staff's recommendation is to approve. Next. The current zoning is multifamily residential, RM40. Next. The current policy is T4 urban neighborhood evolving. Next. As a reminder, here are the key things to know regarding urban design overlays. UDO is a zoning tool that applies regulatory design standards within a designated area. The design standards contained within a UDO do not replace the base zoning, but have the same effect and force as the base zoning. A UDO is used to protect an existing character or to create a new character for a given area. Next. The property is located on the northwest corner of the intersection of 31st and Bellwood Street. 31st and Long UDO is divided into sub-districts and standards apply to building types within these sub-districts. This property is wholly within the G1 general sub-district. Next. The project associated with this request is a series of eight attached townhomes with parking access from the alley. The project is dedicating 2.5 feet to widen the alley to the full Metro Public Works standard. UDO intends for projects to utilize alley access where possible. Next. Thank you. Here are some perspectives of the project. Next. Thank you. The applicant has requested reduction of the side yard setback standard from a required five feet for townhouses to two feet. This request only affects unit one for the area shown on the slide as shaded. Staff views this request as minor without detrimental urban design effects. Metro Public Works has also indicated that the modification will not harm the functionality of the area. Next. This request is somewhat unusual in that it is being made in part because these buildings are partially constructed. Within UDOs, planning typically reviews projects through an administrative final site plan process. However, in this case, planning did not receive a review and a permit was approved in error without a review from the planning department. Steps have been taken to ensure that this does not recur in the future. Next. Additionally, this UDO was amended in 2007 to create a Design Review Committee, or DRC, which gives the community a formal role in the redevelopment of the neighborhood. DRC gives recommendations on requests of this nature. DRC felt in this case that the modification, regardless of the circumstances, could be supported and felt the modification was not detrimental to the project from an overall urban design perspective. They met on March 2nd and unanimously recommended approval of this modification. Next. Thank you. Staff recommends approval of the modification. The request is consistent with the intent of the UDO and in keeping with the recommendation of the Design Review Committee for this overlay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll go ahead and open this item for public hearing. And is the applicant on the line? Please raise your hand in the app and.
Chairman, we do have a representative for the applicant on the call and he should be unmuted and free to speak now.
All right, you're recognized. Please state your name and your address.
Mr. Chairman, can you speak?
Yeah, and you'll have 10 minutes and you can save two of the 10 minutes for rebuttal. You're recognized.
My name is Michael Garrigan, 516 Heather Place. I'm the civil engineer on the project representing on behalf of the developer. I want to make clear and assert that this is not a situation of forgiveness as opposed to permission because the developer was granted permission. He was granted a building permit, went through the process the best way he knew how and was issued the building permit and moved forward with constructing the units. That, as Eric stated, was done in error as planning did not get their final site plan review. How that happened is unclear to me, but it is what it is. It's where we are. It's where we are. The building was originally five feet. The back corner was exactly five feet off the original property line. At some point through the development review process, Public Works requested two and a half feet of right away along the alley, which was then dedicated, which then put the building, the back triangle, two and a half feet into the setback. But again, at some point, the permit was issued without noticing this and that's how, that's where we stand today. So that's really all I've got. That's the situation. That's how we got here. But the DRC did approve this or recommend their approval to this and so does the staff. And we asked for your approval as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. So now we are back to and ready to take calls from members of the public who wish to call in. Your screen should show the call in number. As a reminder, please only call in on your, on your current case that you're interested in. When you begin your testimony, please state your name, address, and whether you support or oppose the item. We're not able to display a timer visually. So you have two minutes and Sean will let you know when 30 minutes is, when you have 30 minutes left. Lisa, we are now, we, do we take, do we get any, receive any emails on this particular item?
Chairman, we received one email in opposition.
Thank you. And I want to thank everyone who emailed. Sean, do we have any callers on this particular item?
Chairman, we do not have any callers at this point. We might pause for just a few seconds and make sure none come in, but so far it's quiet.
Yes, let's give about a minute. And if everyone will just be patient, we'll wait a minute and then we'll, we don't, we don't want to, we want to make sure that we get to everyone. So let's give them one minute. If we had music, we would play it now.
Next time I'll bring my violin.
There we go. I like that direction. Any, any calls, Sean?
No calls, Chairman.
All right, let's just, a few more seconds just to make sure. All right. Seeing no one else calling in on this item, the applicant is, do you want to address anything else, Mr. Applicant?
No, Mr. Chair. Just, just take this as a minor encroachment and all staff levels as well as the DRC have recommended their approval. Thank you.
Okay. And then we, we're now recognized. The councilman, is the councilman on the line? Councilman Taylor? Director, do we see Councilman on the line?
I do not see Councilman Taylor, but I'm just going through the, scrolling down through the attendees just to confirm one more time. I do not see him, no.
Okay. All right, seeing no one else wishing to speak. We'll declare the public hearing closed and we are now on to discussion of commissioners. And why don't we start with Commissioner Haynes?
No comment. It seems very straightforward.
All right, Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you, Chair. Learning the history, how we came here, I was not pleased or amused. I understand sometimes mistakes happen, but whomever inadvertently contributed this mistake, hopefully that department or person will learn from the mistake. And hopefully will not happen this kind of mistake. And having said that, I think request is staff reported, really minor, just one corner of the one parcel right next to the alley. So if this proposal come ahead of the plan or development, not in the midst of the development, I would be in support anyway. So for that, I will support, but I just want to emphasize, you know, I'm not really pleased with how history, learning about the history. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Moore.
No comment.
Councila Murphy.
Thank you, Chair. I've got to echo what, what Commissioner Johnson said is, is even though, you know, permission, forgiveness, all of that, I mean, developers know, especially a development of this project of this size, they know what the zoning is, the overlay and the process. And so to, to skip over a step in that, you know, it's always a little, I guess, five years on the council now has made me a little skeptical or questioning in that matter. But I understand that this is just a small request. But again, it is, it's one of those where it's extremely frustrating to have to go back and, and it's disrespectful to the community. And so I, I guess I have done enough of my public shaming here for that. It is not a huge request. And since the councilman does not seem to have an issue with this, then I am okay with, with supporting it when typically I probably would not be in support of a coming back because of an oopsie or oversight.
Thank you. Commissioner Sims.
Yes, I agree with Councilman Murphy and Commissioner Johnson. My only concern is applicant says he's unclear as to how this happened. And I hope that somebody makes that clear and that we truly have taken steps to remediate this. Other than that, that's all I have to say.
Commissioner Tibbs.
Yeah, I don't, I think I have any problems with the development. I understand the past issues, but, but moving forward, I don't, I think you've gone through everybody. If you haven't, please forgive me, but I make a motion to approve.
That's a proper motion and I'm sure that the Vice Chair would second it.
I'm happy to second.
All right, that's a proper motion and second. Any other discussion? Please raise your hand in the app. And see or vocally state that you have a question or discussion. Seeing none? Roll call. Vice Chair Farr.
Aye.
Commissioner Haynes.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Moore.
Aye.
Councila Murphy.
Aye.
Commissioner Sims.
Aye.
Commissioner Tibbs.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, eight ayes, none against, and item 33 is approved. Now we are on to item 34. And I believe that's Patrick. Patrick, are you on the line?
Evening, Planning Commission.
Go ahead.
This is Patrick Napier, Metro Planning Land Development. The next item on this evening's agenda is item 34, Rezone Case 2020 Z013 PR001. This is a request to rezone from R8 to RM15A NS. Staff's recommendation is to approve. The site is located at 2607 White Creek Pike, approximately 440 feet south of Mormon Arm Road, it contains 1.6 acres. The site is currently zoned R8, which requires a minimum 8,000 square foot lot and is intended for single-family dwellings and duplexes. The policy for the site is T3 suburban neighborhood evolving, which is intended to create and enhance suburban residential neighborhoods with more housing choices, improved connectivity and moderate density development patterns. The site also contains conservation policy, which is intended to preserve environmentally sensitive land features through protection and remediation. You will notice that this site has conservation policy which bisects the site. Staff did receive a determination submitted by the applicant from TDEC, the Tennessee Department of Environmental Conservation. The determination provided that this is in fact not a sensitive environmental feature, but rather a wetware conveyance which can be disturbed. Next slide, please. In conclusion, staff's recommendation is to approve as the proposed RM15A NS Zone District is consistent with the policy at this location. The policy recognizes that change will occur over time. The site fronts White Creek Pike, which is classified as a major arterial street within the major infector street plan. And due to the proximity of the site along White Creek Pike, it will support commercial uses located to the south and east of the site along the western Uland or close by. The property is also located to existing multifamily zoning along White Creek Pike. And therefore, again, staff's recommendation is to approve.
Chairman, forgive me for interrupting. This is, this is Lucy. I wanted to add a clarification. Mr. Napier may have said this, but I didn't hear it. The application initially came in as RM15A and we reviewed it as such. However, the, at the council members, after consulting with the council member, we recommended that the applicant update the request to include the NS district, which you'll recall relates to short-term rental. So I'd ask Patrick to please clarify for the commission that what they're looking at versus the, the presentation you just gave.
So this is Patrick. And yes, that is accurate. I'm working with the applicant and the council member. Their, their request came after the publication of the staff report to include the NS designation, which would preclude both owner occupied and not owner occupied short-term rental from the site.
Thank you, Patrick. I appreciate the clarification. We'll go ahead and that concludes the presentation. We'll go ahead and open this item for public hearing. And is the applicant on the line?
I am. This is Michael Williams.
Perfect. And please state your name and address and you have 10 minutes and you can save two of the 10 minutes for rebuttal. Welcome. Go ahead.
This is Michael Williams. The address is 2607 White Creek Pike. See, I'm trying to share my screen here.
You, as a, sorry, this is Lucy Kemp. You don't have the technical ability to share the screen unless you're a panelist. So can you proceed with the, with the?
Sure. Okay, so originally we requested for a RM20A rezoning based off the T4 neighborhood evolving community character. And through conversations with Metro Planning, they ended up recommending the RM15A. And then Tuesday, we had a community meeting and there was about 20 attendees there. I believe the video was posted on Facebook and had a lot of good conversations pertaining to the property. And as previously mentioned, they are asking for the NS and owner, Mr. Etterovich, to designate the RM15A property as NS, with no intention for a short-term rental. Other than that, I don't really have a whole lot to say about the property. I believe it's with the intent of Metro Planning and I think it'd be a great development for the community and the vision period.
Okay, thank you. And we'll save two minutes for rebuttal for you. We are now ready for calls from members of the public who wish to call in. Your screen should show the call in number now. As a reminder, please only call on this current case. When you begin your testimony, please state your name, address, and whether you support or oppose the items. We're not able to display a timer visually, so Sean will be keeping track of time and she'll remind you when you have, you have two minutes to speak. She'll remind you at 30 minutes when you have 30, I mean, 30 seconds left. Lisa, did we get any emails on this particular item?
Hi, Chairman. We got one email in opposition. We also got one email, I believe, from the same person indicating that with the change to NS, that they were supportive.
Okay, thank you. Sean, do we have any callers for this item?
Chairman, we do not have any callers at this point.
Okay, let's do the same as we did last time. Let's give them a minute to call in. And so we'll have a very uncomfortable silence for a minute.
Chairman, while we're sitting in silence, this is Lucy. I thought I would just clarify that we have allowed members of the public as well as applicants to provide us with materials that we show to the planning commission. But given the, the technology, we think it's helpful to get that in advance. And then we make sure that it's uploaded and the like. So I didn't want to leave the impression that we wouldn't accept materials from others. But that's how the structure of the meeting is set up in terms of the technology. So I just wanted to clarify that in case you, because we did accept that, those items at the last meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
And we still don't have call-ins.
We still don't have call-ins, so. The applicant, you're now ready for rebuttal, but with no one speaking, do you want to rebuttal or not?
I do not.
Okay. And then do we have the council member on the line? I don't think that, let me see if we, I don't see. Director, do you see the council member? I don't.
I do not see Councilmember Tooms on the call.
I don't either. So seeing no one else wishing to speak, we'll declare the public hearing closed. And we are now on to discussion. How about we start with Commissioner Tibbs?
Yes, you know, I don't really see anything that really comes out to why I would have any opposition to this development. I feel like it, you know, it meets all the requirements that we would look for, you know, based on its placement. So I, I won't go on. I would be in support of this project.
Thank you. Commissioner Sims.
I have one question under the supplemental policy. It says that supplemental policies identify a planned bike way and that along the six-foot bike. Is the developer contributing to this or is there any? I mean, what's the discussion at this point about this bike lane and sidewalk?
Hi, Commissioner Sims. Any improvements needed to the road would be reviewed at building permit stage.
Okay. Thank you.
Councila Murphy.
Any other questions?
Yep. Thank you, Commissioner. Councila Murphy.
I noticed that it is, it is a seemingly kind of big change, but it does fit the evolving policy. And so without community input, I mean, or feedback, it sounds like that they're okay with it. But again, we'll, we'll hear it at the council level and have another opportunity there too, if, if there is some opposition as well. But otherwise, it seems to, to fit with the overall pattern.
Thank you. Commissioner Moore.
I agree. It fits with the overall pattern and I appreciate seeing the change in the zoning with the addition of the NS some and support of staff's recommendation.
Commissioner Johnson.
It's always great to know a community and developer can work together. And it is, it's especially wonderful to know because of the input. uh, is, is especially wonderful to know because of the input, uh, even at the last minute, uh, the, uh, zoning was changed from, uh, adding NS. So that is a win-win situation, uh, in this case. And I think, you know, change is hard for in any neighborhood, but considering, uh, you know, underlying policies, a neighborhood evolving. So for that, I think this change and this zoning change makes sense, so I'm in support.
Thank you. Commissioner Haynes?
No comments.
Vice Chair Farr?
Um, I don't have any comments either. I was going to echo, I think, what Commissioner Johnson just said. It's good to see our new zoning, um, options put in place and to see that that made a difference in gaining community support for this project. Um, so with that, I would be happy to make a motion that we approve staff's recommendation of approval for this project.
That's a proper motion. Is there a second? If you'll raise your hand in the app. Commissioner Moore?
I second.
Thank you. Just properly second. Any other discussion? Please raise your hand in the app or verbally state discussion. Seeing no other discussion, roll call. Vice Chair Farr?
I approve.
Commissioner Haynes?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Moore?
Aye.
Councilwoman Murphy? Commissioner Sims?
Aye.
Commissioner Tips?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, eight ayes, none against and the item thirty-four is approved. Now we are on to item thirty-six and... Do we... Is Abby?
Yeah, can y'all hear me?
Yeah, Abby, you're recognized.
Hi. Hello. Um, this is Abby Rickoff and I'll be presenting item thirty-six, which is the eight-twenty-nine Dickerson Pike SP. Next slide. This is a request to rezone from Commercial Limited to specific planned mixed-use zoning for properties located at eight-twenty-nine and eight-thirty-five Dickerson Pike to prevent a mixed-use development. Next slide. Staff recommendation is to disapprove. The site comprises two parcels on zero-point-nine acres located mid-block between Cleveland Street and Hancock Street on the east side of Dickerson Pike. The larger parcel at eight-twenty-nine Dickerson contains a vacant building which is proposed to be removed and the smaller parcel at eight-thirty-five Dickerson contains a commercial building which is indicated to be retained and integrated into the development. Next slide. The existing CL zoning spans the east side of Dickerson Pike. The site is also within the Dickerson Pike fine urban design overlay district and the skyline redevelopment district. Surrounding properties along Dickerson Pike include primarily commercial and industrial uses. Alley number three-oh-nine runs along the back of the site and is generally the dividing line between the non-residential uses along the corridor and the residential uses to the east. The rear alley provides access to properties which front onto Joseph Avenue to the east. Next slide. The base policy is T-four urban mixed-use corridor policy. The site is also located within the Dickerson South Corridor Study, which was adopted by the planning commission on June, uh, of twenty-nineteen and of February of this year after a participatory process of extensive community input. The study provides supplemental guidance for future development in the Dickerson Pike area by addressing land use, transportation, and community design at the neighborhood scale while also supporting high-capacity transit envisioned by National Next. The study also established a supplemental building height sub-district policy for the area, which provides guidance on maximum building heights and appropriate zoning districts that achieve close to the maximum height envisioned by the sub-district. This site is located in a T-four CM sub-district which supports maximum heights of up to four stories. I will explain more about the policy and its application to this site a little bit later in my presentation. Next slide. The proposed site plan, um, is on the screen and we've rotated the site, uh, to view the plan a little bit better. So Dickerson is now at the bottom of the slide and the rear alley is at the top of the slide. The plan proposes a mixed-use building that fronts Dickerson Pike with vehicular access provided from alley number three-oh-nine. Proposed uses include a one-hundred-room hotel, retail, and restaurant. The building is four stories with a fifth story which will include additional hotel rooms, a restaurant, and fitness center. The building's north and south wings extend toward the rear alley, um, partially covering the surface parking area, uh, located off of the alley, which I'll show in, in more detail on the next slide. Pedestrian entries will connect to the sidewalk and planning strip, which will be inside, uh, installed to meet the major and collector's street plan requirements. No vehicular access is proposed from Dickerson. Next slide. This slide, uh, clarifies the extent of the different building levels. So the first level is shaded in green. Um, levels two, three, and four are outlined in blue and then level five is outlined in red. So the majority of the building comprises the area outlined in blue, uh, except for the first level where the parking cuts under the building. Next slide. So here's a view, um, from the rear of the building from the alley and you can see that the parking kind of cuts under the building's upper levels. Next slide. Uh, and this is the view from the front from the corridor. Um, the applicant has included these conceptual elevations with the SP plan. Next slide. As mentioned earlier, the site is located within, um, a T-four CM building height sub-district which supports maximum heights of four stories. Next slide. The sub-districts are intended to step down in height and intensity from the, from west of the corridor to the east. So the blue areas, for instance, represent taller heights on the west side of Dickerson than the orange and yellow areas to the east. The site is circled on the screen and is located in the sub-district which spans the east side of Dickerson Pike from Douglas Avenue to Gray Street. Next slide. The sub-district supports the RM twenty-A, MU-N-A, and M-U-L-A zoning districts. The pattern of development created by these zoning districts is consistent with the envisioned height and intensity supported by the sub-district. Next slide. The plan proposes redevelopment of underutilized properties into a mixed-use development along the major corridor, which would generally be supported by the base T-four CM policy. The building addresses the street with several pedestrian entries and the plan calls for improved pedestrian infrastructure along the Dickerson Pike frontage per the major and collector's street plan. However, the plan proposes a fifth story with an overall maximum height of five stories and seventy-five feet. Although this fifth story steps back from the lower levels, staff finds the overall height to be inconsistent with the general guidance for building heights in the area where the intent is to step down in height from west to east. Therefore, staff recommendation is to disapprove.
Thank you. And so we will open this item for public hearing and is the applicant on the line? If you are, please raise your hand so that we can queue you up.
Chairman, we do have the applicant representative on the line and they should be, um, unused and able to speak now.
All right, applicant, you have 10 minutes and you can save two, uh, minutes of the 10 for rebuttal. Please state your name and address and welcome.
Thank you very much. My name is Aaron Arson. I live at thirteen-oh-three Forest Avenue. Uh, I also own the property. My primary place of business is at thirteen-oh-one Dickerson Pike, which is also in the South Dickerson Corridor. Um, I appreciate the opportunity to present to the commission today and the effort that you and the staff have made for us to continue to present and follow the script one right now. This development is a partnership between myself, Andrew Beard and Mark Deutchman of Core Development, and Brett Diaz of Sheraton Group. The architect on this project is Jamie Pepper with Pepper T. Rhodes, who was a member of the steering committee for the Dickerson South Corridor Study. We have an entirely local team, which was something that was mentioned in our neighborhood meetings as a benefit and something that they were in support of. Like to give a couple of details about the project. Our objective with this project all along has been to create a project that fulfills the goals and objectives that were laid out in the Dickerson South Corridor Study. We feel like we've been able to do that and our project meets a lot of the study's stated desires, including a tree-lined street scape, a multi-story mixed-use building with the ground floor activated by retail, restaurants, and other services. Yes?
I just want to make sure, um, is everybody else hearing this clear? Um, it may just be mine. To me, he's a little muffled. Am I the only person that can, can't hear it well?
You can, whatever device you're on, if you could just be closer to the device, that would probably help.
Yeah, is this better? Can you hear me better now?
Yes. Commissioner?
Uh, yes, yes. Yes, that's better. Just definitely stay close to it. If, if it's, if I'm the only one, I'm sorry, but yeah, if you can stay close to it.
No problem at all.
Um, so our project details, our objective with this project all along has been to create a project that fulfills the goals and objectives that were laid out in the Dickerson South Corridor Study. We feel like we've made a strong attempt to do that and our project meets a lot of the study's stated desires, including a tree-lined streetscape, a multi-story mixed-use building with the ground floor activated by retail, restaurants, and other services that we hope will cater to the residents and employees within the walking distance of the corridor. We've also allocated the required ten-foot pedestrian sidewalk in addition to the planning strip and allocated space for future mass transit in an effort to help create a building that prioritizes pedestrians. Uh, as mentioned in the staff report, we chose to save the existing masonry structure at eight-three-five Dickerson Pike and incorporate it into the project. It's a great, uh, fabric building with generous ceiling heights, large exposed trusses and decking, which are all things that we feel will offer a sense of identity and visual quality to the project. Uh, and we have committed to the neighborhood in our neighborhood meetings and will continue to take significant care through final design to make sure that we create a building that draws from the area's history and creates a cohesive, authentic design. Uh, we, we really want this to be a project that the place that the residents of the neighborhood consider an amenity and feel at home. All the upper floors, we have, uh, designed as a, as a boutique hotel, as a full-service boutique hotel. We really want to make sure that we're attracting the community and we've had several conversations with them about that because we know that that will lead to the long-term viability of the project. I'd like to talk a little bit about our community process and the community involvement we've had. We've really appreciated the opportunity to have ongoing dialogue and feedback from planning staff, from Councilman Parker, and from the neighborhood groups from the surrounding area. During preliminary design, we had the opportunity to meet with Councilman Parker to discuss the proposed project. We also met and had calls multiple times with him throughout the process. We also met with the board of both the McFerrin Park and Cleveland Park Associations to discuss the project and make sure that we were soliciting their feedback and incorporating it. We, in fact, we had two meetings with the McFerrin Park Association at the request of the board. The first was to give them an overview of the project and answer any general questions and we came back a second time to provide a greater level of detail and answer specific questions. We also presented the project and answered questions at a meeting of the Cleveland Park Neighborhood Association. Uh, there was a lot of positive support and excitement shared during those meetings and that is evidenced by the eighteen letters of support that we received, which are included in your packet. And these letters include support from the presidents of both the McFerrin Park and Cleveland Park Neighborhood Association, multiple additional board members as well as past board members and area residents. We also received support from the adjacent commercial property owners on either side of the subject property, two additional owners on the same block, all of whom we met with and discussed the project in detail. In those meetings, the feedback from the neighborhood showed a strong aversion to short-term rentals and a desire for new restaurant and retail options in a well-designed building. As you'll note, our SP specifically eliminates owner-occupied and non-owner occupied short-term rentals as permitted uses. The community members also seemed to pleased that we were pursuing this project as a site-specific plan since that offers greater transparency into the design and the specifics of the project. I'd like to mention a few things specifically about our fifth floor. Obviously, we would certainly prefer to be on the consent agenda with staff approval, but we understand the presence of our partial fifth story does not align with the height recommendations of the corridor study for the east side of Dickerson. We normally wouldn't likely even present to commission without staff approval, but based on the feedback we received during our community meetings and the additional studies that we've done, we really feel like that that partial fifth story is appropriate and we're therefore asking for your consideration. From examining that corridor study and reading through that, as well as talking to members of the steering committee, it's our understanding that the intent of having six stories at the front setback line on the west side of the street and four stories on the east side of the street is to have high development intensities on the west side of the street, progressively step down in height and massing as moving, as you move eastward into the established McFerrin Park neighborhood. Uh, we've worked hard to come up with a building design and a site plan that we feel accomplishes that goal even with the partial fifth story. I'd like to direct your attention to some of the notes in the packet and our submission packet that shows that over sixty percent of the alley side of the building is more than forty-eight feet from the rear setback, which helps provide space between the commercial programming on Dickerson and those residential homes on Joseph. Our fifth story is also forty-three percent smaller than the other stories and twenty percent of this fifth story square footage is allocated as a public amenity, uh, which is in the form of a rooftop restaurant. All eighteen of our, um, of our support letters express support for the fifth story and specifically state this. And we've also inset that fifth story from the parapet wall on all sides of the building. In fact, multiple people, uh, when we sat down with the neighbors and had conversations with them, actually noted that the hotel units and the commercial programming on that fifth story actually served to help shield the residences on Joseph from the rooftop, uh, from the hotel's rooftop amenity deck and the restaurant's outdoor seating. Uh, after our initial conversations with planning staff, we did do a detailed study of a four-story concept and in order to achieve the minimum square footages and make sure the project is viable and still be able to deliver the full-service boutique hotel that prohibits short-term rentals, a four-story building design would entail us enlarging the podium, the ground floor podium, and bringing the entire alley side or that, that east side of the building all the way back to the rear setback. Therefore, we believe and, and are, and are hoping that you'll see that the building as designed actually does a better job of stepping down the massing as the building moves closer to the homes on Joseph than a four-story building would. The last thing I'd like to do, if you're able to see some of the images that we presented in the packet, I'd like to make a few specific points in reference to those. Starting on page eight of your packet, you can see the existing site conditions. Moving to page nine, it shows the west elevation of the building fronting Dickerson and this view shows the limited visibility of the fifth floor from the street. In fact, to a pedestrian standing on the sidewalk in front of the building, the fifth story massing really is not even visible. Uh, flipping to page ten, we, we provided a detail of the rear or the east elevation of the building that shows the space that we've worked to create from the alley all the way to the back of the building. And then page eleven is another rear view. It's an aerial view of the back of the building where you can see the total distance between the residential houses on Joseph and the back of our building as well as the inset of the fifth floor from the parapet wall. And lastly, page twelve shows another aerial view that shows how the fifth floor massing provides some separation. Uh, as I mentioned earlier, between the homes on Joseph and the rooftop amenity deck and the restaurant's outdoor seating.
Applicant, you have two minutes remaining.
Very good. Which, uh, also is mentioned as a positive by people in attendance at the neighborhood meeting, uh, and in all of our support letters. So that wraps up my overview. I appreciate the opportunity to discuss and I'll save any remaining allotted time to answer questions or, uh, or provide additional commentary.
All right, thank you. We'll have, uh, you have two minutes, uh, well, minute and forty-five seconds for rebuttal. Uh, we are now at the point in the meeting that we are ready to take calls from members of the public who wish to call in. Your screens should now show the call-in number. As a reminder, please only call on the current case. When you begin your testimony, please state your name, address, and whether you support or oppose the item. We're not able to display the, a timer visually. Sean will be keeping track of time and she will give you, uh, a warning when you have thirty seconds left, um, to speak. Uh, so now Lisa, did we receive any emails on this item?
Hi Chairman, we received eighteen emails in support and one email in opposition.
Okay, thank you. Sean, do we have any, um, callers for this item?
Chairman, we don't have any callers at this time, um, so we can take our pause if you would like.
Yeah, let's take a, a minute, um, to pause and give the public a chance to call in. So we'll, uh, Director, do you have anything to, to add while we take a minute to allow callers to call in? You okay?
I'll bring my violin next time. Let me go back to that.
Okay, okay. We'll, we'll give everybody a minute. Sean, do we have any callers?
Chairman, we do not have any callers.
All right, and we'll give them 30 more seconds, and then we'll go on from there. All right, Sean, one more time. Any more callers? Anyone? Any callers?
No, no callers here, Chairman. We're still quiet.
Still quiet, okay. Seeing no other callers. The applicant, you have a minute and 45 seconds. Do you want to say anything else?
Given no other comments, we don't have much else to add. I know Councilman Parker's on the line, and I assume that he'll be speaking afterwards, so we're, want to turn the floor over to him, and then the commission. We appreciate the opportunity to speak on behalf of the project.
Thank you. And it is that time. Councilman Parker, are you on the line?
Yes, Chair, I'm here. Thank you.
You're recognized.
Wonderful. So, I really want to thank staff for their really hard and detailed work on this proposal, as well as the development team. This thing, this thing came to me and to the neighborhood like pretty fully baked, which is, which is always appreciated. You know, they had, they had a strong concept, and it was a little bit to be worked out, you know, notably the particular land use of short-term rentals. I mean, I think the feeling from the neighborhood was, you know, if this is going to be transient housing or visitor housing or short-term housing of any kind, you know, we wanted that to be in a way that it was managed and that there was an owner who could be communicated with and talked to if there were any issues, so that we're not having the, some of the nuisance problems associated with short-term rental complexes, parties and whatnot, you know. You look those up in parcel viewer, and all of a sudden, you've got nine different owners you're supposed to try to get a hold of, and some of them are out of state, and it just, we've strongly preferred that this, the consolidated ownership hotel and the development team was willing to accommodate that request from the neighborhood. And the community engagement piece, I was able to attend both of the McFerrin Park Neighborhood Association meetings where the development team attended and presented. There was, you know, very little, if any, negative feedback at either of those meetings. It was more of a constructive conversation about the particular land use of the, of the short-term rental that folks didn't want. The, the height is, the height is a sticking point. It is the reason for the disapproval and, you know, the staff's recommendation of disapproval. And I certainly understand that, you know, this is a, this is a new policy, and this is one of the, one of the first projects to be considered under it. And I think that, in this case, a lot of care has been taken by the development group to, to, you know, frame that, that partial fifth floor in a way that it is not, I don't feel that it sets a precedent for, you know, blanket approval of five stories along this policy area. In fact, many people within the community, as Aaron pointed out, sort of recognize the partial fifth floor as, as almost shielding the, the established neighborhood from the rooftop restaurant and seating and amenity activity, which is, that's a consistent theme that I hear from residents in McFerrin Park and along Dickerson, is that, you know, they do want, they don't want these, I don't know, people leaning over a railing, you know, 100 feet in the air over their backyard is not like a comfortable thing. So, this project does not have that. The fifth floor, the amenities are all facing Dickerson, where the people will be walking and know what's going to be up there. But I think, I think broadly, I'm in support of this project, and I am not, I don't feel that, that the commission's approval of this project in particular, because it is so well-thought-out and so careful with the partial fifth floor, I don't see this as setting a blanket precedent. If this was just a simple, hey, we want to do five, I would probably not be supportive of it, but, but I am supportive of this project, and I would ask you all to please consider it. And that's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Appreciate you, your comments. And seeing no one else wishing to speak, I declare the public hearing closed. And so with that, we are on to discussion. And how about we start with Commissioner Moore?
Sure. So, it's obvious, this is a really well-thought-out plan. I'm very impressed by the applicant's presentation. I think when I first was looking at this and saw staff recommendation, I was really concerned about setting a precedent, especially since in this area, there has not been much building under the Dickerson Plan study. But I think there's so many positives. I think there's been great community input, I think, for a project like this in this neighborhood to have no one, we had one email that was opposed to it, but have no one call in and oppose, I think that's saying quite a bit. I appreciate the thoughts that went into listening to the community and removing the short-term rentals and things like that, and the making the fifth floor something that the community can enjoy. I definitely can see why those that are in support are behind this project. I guess I really want to hear what others have to think, especially about the issue with the fifth floor. I'm leaning towards supporting the project and going against staff's recommendation, but again, I'll continue to listen.
Commissioner, Councilwoman Murphy?
Thank you, Chairman. I, I too always have concerns anytime we're kind of making, going against staff recommendation that, especially when it's something that's not fitting into a policy, because it, it does make me concerned about the next project and the next project and the next project that point to what we decide here tonight. But ultimately, of course, as District Five is very aware of, whether planning approves something or disapproves something, it can go on to the council. And, and my, I guess my, I don't want to say words of wisdom, I guess like my, my thoughts to the councilman is, and I think he's very aware of, of District Five and, and cases that are approved and disapproved at planning and, and what that happens at the council and all of that. So, I, I think he's explained why he is in support of this project and why he's in support of us kind of overriding the staff here. I hope that he makes that case very clear to the council when we get to that level, because I think that there are a lot of eyes watching how planning cases go through District Five that are disapproved by the commission or just recommended for disapproval. And so, I would like to hear some other, other commissioners who've handled these cases longer to kind of think through, should we override the policy here or not? Because I don't really like to override policy. But of course, you know, we can disapprove, and the councilman can continue to take it to, to the, to the council. I think the integrity of the staff recommendation and, and the policies are important, and our job is to weigh that very heavily here at, at the commission. And then my job at the council is to, is to weigh the community and the councilman's opinion with that. So, I'm going to listen to, to what others have to say.
Thank you. Commissioner Sims?
I am really grateful as Commissioner, as Councilwoman just said, that there is another stop along the way, because our charge in the charter is to look at policy, and we're not to judge quality. And for every neighborhood, what they may want or not want really depends on, on the policy. And in this case, I do live in a neighborhood similar to this, and height makes all the difference in the world. And although this project has done a lot to take that height into consideration, I do question whether it sets a precedent or not. I also have some concerns. I know there are a lot of letters in support, but there is a Reverend Ronnie Mitchell, who is the senior pastor at one of the churches, who's been there for 35 years, who I know very well, who really does have the voice of a lot of the people who might not have come to the meeting, who couldn't come to the meeting, and he's asking for disapproval at this time, and I tend to respect that kind of letter on behalf of a lot of the neighbors that couldn't write in or couldn't get to the meeting. So, I agree with the staff on this one and really wish Councilperson, Councilman lots of luck as he takes it on.
Commissioner Tibbs?
So first, can you hear me okay? I went to a different mode first. Guys hear me okay?
Yes.
No? Can't hear me at all?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hey. Hold on one second. Now I can't hear anything.
Can you hear us? Commissioner Tibbs, can you hear us?
Hold on, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. I switched earpieces. Anyway, I, I'm pretty much, will echo everything everybody else says, and there are a lot of cases where we, we try to, as architects, you know, when we want to go at extra height, there are certain areas that we're able to do things to, to, I'm going to use for by height, and I don't think that, you know, we're able to, this has been exhibited, or maybe I shouldn't say, we don't have that option here. And, you know, unfortunately, I think it's just clear, a height issue, and, and I don't see enough, you know, like aesthetically, and I think as far as a project, I don't have any issue with it, but I, I agree with my fellow commissioners that there's just not enough compelling information to allow this extra height. And so I will unfortunately have to, well, not unfortunate, but I'll have to also recommend this approval following staff recommendation.
You, Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, Chair. I do appreciate all the comment. I agree with, you know, all of the commissioners' comment. This project product is well-thought-out, and, you know, no wonder this plan is getting a lot of, lots of neighborhood support. And appreciate all the aerial view and appreciate the thought partial fifth floor is hidden, and every single thing makes sense. However, as a planning commissioners appoint, we've been through Dickerson Corridor Study quite a long time, and there was community input, and there was a lot of thought were into when we adopt this final proposal in February 27th. In that, a building height substrate policy, it does not have a five-stories policy. It transitioned from six stories, four stories to three stories. No matter how great the plan will be, we as a commissioner, I feel like we have to adhere with a policy. So, I cannot find any fault that staff is, analysis was wrong, and I think staff correctly interpreted this policy and project. For that, as a planning commissioner's point of view, I will have to support staff recommendation.
Thank you. Commissioner Haynes?
So, I think they've done a good job to soften the project to try to get us to buy into it. I'd love to get the director's view of the height of it.
Sure, thank you, Commissioner. I, you know, this was a case where we had spent a lot of time with the community, and the height of the buildings was a very specific issue. And so, from a policy perspective, I really felt like, even though there was broad community support, that it was important to bring this case to the planning commission, as it's one of the first ones out. And I think to some of the comments that have been heard or that have been expressed here, there's a lot to really like about this project, and there are many aspects of the project that I think do meet the policy, notwithstanding the height. And, but, you know, our rationale for bringing this to the commission was, again, because it's the first one out, and because we felt like this was such an important issue for the community, that we wanted for the commission to opine on the factors that would go into a, a statement of support or a statement of disapproval. So, because I do think these can be precedent settings, so on the fifth story, they've proposed a setback that isn't visible and the like, and so if you saw that as a factor that you wanted to consider, I think that's something that you could express. I do think that one of the things that we struggled with a fair amount on Dickerson, and this was raised in the presentation, is that the height on the west side and the east side is, it varies, and it varies because of the infrastructure and the freeway there. And so, I would note that the height on the west side here is six stories. I think that's, could be a factor that you, that you want to consider. So, again, I think we're, the tension here is that the project itself has many attributes. I don't think it meets the, the letter of the policy that was so carefully debated. And so whatever direction that we want to go in, and the commissioners have put a lot of good, good material into the record to help us as staff understand how we want to approach future reviews. So with that, I thank you.
So, can I ask a few more questions about the policy? I know it has a four-story height limitation. Does it have a specific number associated with their four stories, and could a developer put a penthouse on top of the four?
If I can ask a member of the policy team, I believe that Mr. Claxton is on the line. Could you answer that question?
Yes, Commissioners. This is Greg Claxton with the Planning Department. I was just looking up the page that references the heights, and it's all in terms of stories.
So, if it's in terms of stories, it would not restrict a penthouse from a capital unit, and it wouldn't restrict the four stories being 18-foot floor-to-ceiling, accomplish 76 feet in height?
Not in terms of the Dickerson South supplemental policies. That's correct.
So, that's the struggle that I have with this. They've done a very good job of screening, and at 75 feet, he could have a four-story building that was equally as tall. And yet, I, I too am concerned about opening up Pandora's Box, and every project along Dickerson Road comes in asking for one extra story, and we've got to consider going against the policy we just adopted. So, I will, I will wait and cast my opinion after everybody speaks.
Thank you. Commissioner, Vice Chair Farr?
I am. Thank you, Commissioner Haynes. I think you posed a lot of the questions that were on my mind. You know, it's, with what we have seen in this area, it's rare to see this many letters of support for a project. It's been, and, and I, you know, Um, it's been and and I, you know, so I think it feels like a very appropriate use for this site. Um, and especially the fact that they've limited the short term rentals. Um, I struggle with the policy question. Um, and again, I know how much work went into putting in place the Dickerson Pike Corridor Study, and I don't want to immediately upend that. But I do think, you know, six six stories on one side, four stories on the other. I think what Jeff just Commissioner Haynes just pointed out about the fact that it's not a a height limitation, it's a story limitation. Um, we don't necessarily even know how the height, total height of this building would compare. It could be that it's not that much above what four stories could be. Um, I think there's there's enough pieces there that make me think, you know, this, maybe this is a time to think about um, this being an appropriate exception to the policy. Um, so I uh, I am leaning towards um, potential. I'm leaning towards voting uh, against staff's recommendation for the disapproval.
Okay, and so now we we've gone through everyone and then Council Lady Murphy, do you have your hand? You have your hand raised in the in the app? Would you like to speak?
Yes, I would. Um, I I have a question for the councilman. I think I want to make sure that I understand his position. Um, even though I know that we've heard there, you know, um, handful of letters in support, it sounds like a letter against. Um, there has been meetings and all of that. But if we could just go back to the councilman and get some clarification of his position on on this uh, on the project, on on if we were to kind of approve a variance or or go above what is in the community plan. And if we were to disapprove this tonight because it doesn't match the policy, does he plan on taking this to the council? Um, I think the those uh, that might help me clarify where I want to be on on this overall because because I am struggling between I I want to respect the policy. I want to respect the community process of the policy. Um, policy is not that old, uh, old in the sense of like, it's um, very recent and freshly updated. And so if I'm sorry, Councilman Parker, to put you on the spot a little bit more, but if you could, you could just help me feel a little bit more comfortable about all of that, that would be wonderful.
Councilman.
Okay, um, well, thank y'all for all the consideration and discussion so far. Um, and and I do recognize that there there is a letter of opposition from Pastor Mitchell, who is a is a really valued member of the community, have a ton of respect for. Um, I I um, the, so there was actually for for a couple of those, either one or both of the McFerrin Park um, community meetings that we had. Um, I I believe the letter referenced, I don't have it in front of me, but I believe the letter referenced the eight hundred block of Joseph, um, the 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 area behind here. Um, and a a lot of those residents were actually in attendance for those meetings because of another proposed project, which was, I think ultimately recommended for with withdrawal by staff. Um, but they did have an opportunity to to see this and comment on it. And I I don't, I don't recall anyone um, anyone voicing opposition during those meetings. But I mean, of course, um, you know, I'm kind of struggling with the the public notice and electronic meetings thing. Um, I actually, the power was out in half my districts during the council public hearing, the last council public hearing. So I just deferred every bill that I had because um, you know, I I had no expectation of people using their device batteries and and data to to try to tune into a a public hearing virtually. Um, so I understand that this is not ideal. Um, the 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 electronic public hearings. Um, uh, the the question, so I I I'm supportive of this project to the extent that I'm I'm asking um, for for the commission's consideration. Um, I think that as 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 cool as this project is and and as much support as it has in the neighborhood, uh, I I don't see it as something that with a planning commission disapproval that I would um, try to push through council. Um, I think that that would, I I don't know exactly what the criteria is that I would that would that would lead me to do that. But it would be extraordinary and this project is cool, but it is not extraordinary. And um, again, I I really appreciate, I mean, this is, this is the the policy that's that's guiding of an emerging corridor in my district. So I I really appreciate all the really thoughtful discussion that we've had. Um, about about this particular case and um, I I just uh, I appreciate all y'all's consideration and um, I I do ask you to 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 su- to support this here at the commission level. Um, but but I probably would not um, would not move forward with it with with a disapproval from from the commission. Um, thank you. That's all I got for now.
Okay, thank you. Council Lady Murphy, does that answer all your questions?
It does. If I could just add, I guess, a comment or or a suggestion here is that with a disa- with the staff disapproval with, you know, we are in crazy times and it is hard to ask constituents to um, come to do virtual community meetings and things like that. And I think I did hear, um, at least in part, the development team say that, you know, they will typically wouldn't bring this if it didn't have staff approval. I'm wondering if a deferral might be appropriate here where the development team and the council member and the staff work together to maybe find um, a little bit more middle ground between the policy and what the developer wants to do. Where the, you know, we aren't, we don't have a the first case, the first test case or litmus test here. Um, having to not feel comfortable or have commissioners feel like we're really having to choose between well, the community set and the community update that they want this height, but now we're hearing that this building and this project's okay. But it might not be okay for what could go next door or whatnot. I I'm just wondering if if what might be best here is if it is deferred, give them, give everybody a little bit more time to uh, work through and try to match up with the policy or at least hear some more support for um, why it doesn't need to match the policy. So um, I'd be happy to make that motion if it's appropriate now, but I'm also happy to hear more from the commissioners.
Yeah, let's uh, Director, what um, you know, generally, thank you, Council Lady. Appreciate that. Um, Director i- is with the wh- what are your thoughts on on the deferral motion?
So I I appreciate the the commissioners or Councilwoman Murphy's comments because I think that's where the staff was trying to navigate this first project. If I'm, let me just clarify my understanding that the purpose of the deferral is to for us to sort of assess whether or not the the step back on the the fifth floor meets the intent of the policy or to assess whether or not some of the questions that Commissioner Haynes raised around penthouses and stories versus height is something that was contemplated. I don't want to put words in in your mouth. I just want to make sure if if we do recommend a deferral, I think we would want to be productive about it and would want to make sure that we um, that 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 we knew sort of some of the parameters that would help the commission and its deliberation.
Council Lady.
I think that, I think what um, Director Kemp has has said is is along the lines of what I was talking about is is was it, when the policy was being developed, was there conversations about stories and heights? Or is that something that needs to be potentially revisited? Um, and also to see if there is some sort of more of a compromise on the design of the height, um, the necessity of the height and the policy. And um, and but uh, but of course, you know, this this could go to council and Councilman Parker can always chop off top layer if he so chooses. So um, I realize that kind of takes me back away from the the motion, but I think at this point, I think that, you know, on test case or or the first case out of the gate, I think it's important that we really think through these issues. Uh, and and it sounds like from the director, from the council member, that I'd be most comfortable with the deferral. And if this came back still disapproved, then you know, that's something that Councilman Parker can can tweak if he feels needs tweaking at council or not take it to council. But but I I'd like to give them a little bit more opportunity to to bring this back where it meets policy or at least staff feels like it meets the intent of the policy.
Thank you, Council Lady. Any any other discussion? Let's let's make sure we, before we
Yeah, I would like to say something, please, Mrs. Pearl.
Commissioner Sims. And then Commissioner Haynes.
Okay. First of all, I want to thank Commissioner Haynes for the questions he's raised because um, but there are some guidelines for making exceptions to rules. And one of the things that about making exceptions to rules is if we have to, there's something fundamentally wrong with the rule. And I think Commissioner Haynes asked those questions. I do question what risks we're doing, both culturally and reputationally, um, in terms of the first time out with the community plan that we make an exception without a great deal of thought. Um, I also think that it's um, what what justification do we really exception? Um, in terms of of we might like the building, it's a good plan, all that, but there ought to be some type of real policy that's driving the fact that we are making an exception to the rule. So I think the only thing we can do here is either turn it down and let the council person keep um, pursuing this through his own legislative process, or we can actually send it back to staff and ask them to help clarify some of the issues that uh, Count, the Commissioner Haynes raised.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Haynes, you recognize?
Yeah, I I think I'd like to support Council Lady Murphy's motion for deferral. I I think given that this is the first project we've studied under the Dickerson Road Corridor. Um, floor to ceiling heights can vary significantly, especially in the ground plane when you're trying to put retail on the ground plane. Having a penthouse uh, can change the complexity of a project. Is that considered a four or is that not considered a four? But I think there are enough issues that staff needs to chew on with us relative to this new policy in the Dickerson Road Corridor. Um, so we don't continue to open ourselves up for further debate when we consider future projects along this very important car.
Thank you, Commissioner Haynes. And we have Commissioner Johnson raise your hand. Are you, are you seeking to be recognized, Commissioner Johnson?
Yes, Chair. Yes, uh, I do support uh, Council Lady Murphy's uh, defer motion because and I would like to request uh, followed by uh, Commissioner Haynes recommendation. Because four story and, you know, uh, fifteen foot ceiling in between the floor and four story, uh, ten foot between the floor, it's totally different. I was disturbed by we are just measured only the story, not the height limit. So I would like ask staff to how better interpret those story and relation with the height and, you know, appropriate transition and rooftop or whatever the structure might be. And then so kind of defer motion because what I was struggling is under the, you know, current policy, it just clearly states three, four, six, twelve and fifteen, just stories. And does not really uh, talk about trans- better transition. And so some area like uh, this specific area, now I realize right next to six story policy. So would that be a transition would be appropriate? So I would like to staff to really consider those intent of the policy and then come back uh, to us. Uh, that would be my request.
Thank you, Commissioner. And so um, Council Lady Murphy, uh, any, do you want to make a motion to and and let's uh, Director, how you, one meeting deferral Director, is that what you're thinking?
Um, give me a moment. I'd like to consult the council and the planning commission's calendar. I think if we're going to issue some some guidance that addresses height and addresses some of these issues, we'll need more than a meeting um, to to accomplish that.
What about two meetings?
I think we should do a two meeting deferral. We will work with the applicant and um, I'll I'll have an opportunity to visit with the with the policy team um, to talk a little bit about how we would want to approach this. You know, this is a really good case of um, where I think the policy team strives very much to match the end plan with the community expectations. And sometimes we do have policies that are more flexible around height, but that reflects the community's comfort level with that flexibility. And so um, I think this is just a very good, a good example of, you know, going out working for for months and then having a case come in and realizing where there are areas that, you know, maybe the community might have been more supportive, but we didn't have a case to look at um, during that conversation. And so we we appreciate the time to make sure that we get this right. And um, I think a two meeting deferral is a good, is a good start there. Thank you.
All right, uh, C- Council Lady Murphy, would you be willing to to do a a deferral motion for two meetings?
Yes, I move to defer this project for two meetings.
That's a proper motion. And is there a second, Commissioner Haynes?
Sir.
A proper second? Any other discussion? You can raise your hand or verbally be recognized? And seeing no other seeing no other discussion? Uh, all in favor of two meaning deferral, say aye. Oh, roll call. Vice Chair Farr.
Aye.
Commissioner Haynes.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Moore.
Aye.
Commissioner Murphy.
Aye.
Commissioner Sims.
Aye.
Commissioner Tibbs.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, eight ayes and against two meaning deferral. So now we are on to let's see here. Other business, uh, anything, uh, and and that concludes public hearing items, right, Director? Correct? Director, are you there?
Forgive me, you just broke up for just a moment. Can you repeat that?
Yeah, uh, that concludes our uh, regular public hearing.
Yes, yes, thank you.
And so now we're on other business. Anything on historic, Commissioner Tibbs?
Uh, only that we also are um, doing virtual meetings and and our next one is uh, next week on the twentieth.
Okay, and Parks, Commissioner Haynes.
Virtual meeting last week, which went very smoothly and did not last seven hours. We are on the pu- on the target.
Okay. Uh, Executive Committee, uh, Vice Chair, you and I, I don't, I don't have anything. Do you have it? Well, we're under budget hearings and I think um, the director's going to address that. Do you have anything, Vice Chair?
I do not. Just to say thank you for seamlessly leading us for the last few weeks.
Oh, it's, you know, it's a little more difficult, uh, but I really appreciate y'all's patience, uh, Commissioners. You guys are great to work with and I under the circumstances, I I feel like y'all have really stepped up and and I appreciate it. So thank you for that, Vice Chair. Uh, Director, do you have anything?
Um, I wanted to let the commission know, um, first, thank you for your service and for for participating in these meetings. To the chair's point, we know that uh, learning a new system is, can be challenging, but I I really feel like the staff is and and the commission is is doing such an incredible job and we appreciate your support. Um, the, just very quickly, I had the opportunity to um, present to the Budget and Finance Committee at Metro Council, uh, which is chaired by Chairman Mendez yesterday. Um, we talked about a number of topics. We talked about a number of topics and I thought that the discussion went really well, even though of course we're in a very difficult sort of economic and health issue right now as a city. We received a lot of very good comments from Metro Council members and I have some follow-up work to do, so it went it went well though. Thank you.
Good deal Director, we appreciate it. And we are now on to legislative update. Council Lady Murphy?
I don't think I have anything.
Okay. Before we go, I just again want to echo, I want to I want to thank all of our ITS folks and and the team, the team, the staff team has done just outstanding and Director, I appreciate all your hard work and everyone on the call. We have an awesome team. They do great work and so I I appreciate it. I hope everyone stays safe and I don't have anything else. Director, do you have anything else?
No, thank you. I hope everyone has a happy and safe weekend.
Well, that concludes our agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Without objection, we're adjourned. Appreciate everybody. Thank you very much and we'll see you next time. Bye-bye.